Hold on one second. All right, good morning. April 4th, Town Board Work Session. Supervisor's in another meeting this morning, so he asked me to stand in for him as Deputy Supervisor. All right, I guess Peter, we have some site plans this morning.
Good morning, we're in the Planning Department. We have three site plans for the Board to consider acting as the Board of Site Plan Review this afternoon. The first one is called Cumberland Farms in Ronkonkoma. You may all know it as, I guess it's called Beverage Land. It's at the southeast corner of Smithtown Boulevard and Roseville Avenue. I was trying to do it without these, but I have to break down.
It only gets worse.
This involves the demolition of an existing 8,400 square foot retail building.
Oh, thank God.
That's the beverage store.
Ugliest thing.
They have very good products there. And this is to be replaced with a filling station with a 4,738 square foot accessory retail building, pump canopy and site work. The NEG deck was adopted on March 7th. This was subject to approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals, and Suffolk County DPW as both roadways or county roads. Recommending approval with three conditions. The first that they obtain necessary permits from the Building Department. The second that they obtain highway work permits from Suffolk County DPW for access to both roads. Three is a landscape condition, and four was about building material. The applicant has agreed to the conditions. The site plan is behind you along with the rendering. This is the building that's there now. Beverage store.
I can't see that far away.
You know where it is, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the southwest corner has the condominium development. The northwest corner has the new 7-Eleven at the corner of Gibbs, and there's a shopping center and the 9-11 Responders Park on the other corner, the northeast corner. So this is the last corner to be redeveloped.
It's been there for a long time.
So the owners are selling it? Or they're just making something, same owners or?
I believe it's a new owner. I'm not sure, I was just looking at the site plan. The next application, are there any questions about that one?
Nope.
No.
The next application is Narda Microwave. This is at the southeast corner of Moreland Road and Commerce Drive in the industrial park. Let me go to the site plan. This is for a proposed 51,744 square foot addition. The NEG deck is on this afternoon's agenda. Recommending approval with one condition, that the applicant obtain a road opening permit from the Town Highway Department, and then approximately 400 feet of broken curb be replaced as directed by the Highway Department. They're in agreement with the condition, and we're recommending approval.
Thank you.
This is a rendering. Basically, coming out to the east side of the building to match the existing building. I believe they do defense electronics there. The third application is J&amp;D Beauty. This is at the southeast corner of Adams Avenue and New Highway. The Seeker is recommended for this afternoon. Recommending approval with two conditions, that they obtain applicable permits from the Building Department, and that they obtain a highway work permit. This is for a parking lot expansion. This is also subject to approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals. The yellow highlighted area is the parking expansion. Pretty minor in scope. Any questions?
No, that's it.
All right, thank you.
Kevin, you have anything to present at all?
So, just here for space.
Okay, all right, great, great. All right.
If you have any questions, of course I'll make them one.
Mrs. Noah?
That's it?
No. Mrs. Dorella?
Yeah. I want to talk to everybody here, and I've already spoke to the Supervisor regarding marketing our town a little better. I have Greg, you want to come up? Greg lives in Kings Park. How do you pronounce your last name?
Greg Filipkowski.
Okay. And he's made some stunning videos of Kings Park, the town of Kings Park, as well as the Heritage Museum. I believe the commercial for the cars.
Mercedes Benz of Smithtown.
Yes.
Yeah, Peter, why don't you take your planted palm, why don't you sit on this? Sit here, you can come up here, we don't bite. Come up here.
Thank you.
He's a Deputy Director, so you should be able to.
Thanks.
Sit in.
I've been working since around October with, just me, just looking into ways of marketing our town a little better to bring people to our restaurants and shops from other towns. The few ideas I've had, don't, do not do justice to what I have been working on for the past couple of months. A lot of towns in New York State have been doing video tours, where they do, where the town itself will do videos of their parks, their schools, their arts, separate videos, et cetera, which are then put on their town website. Greg then, when I saw Greg's work, it was very similar to what I'd been already working on. So I met with him, what, last week, you know, with Tony Tansy, who's interested as well, as a Chamber President. And so we're kind of on the roll with that. I've looked up some statistics which are in front of you, and I'll just read some right now. Currently, 86% of consumers check menus from restaurants online. 81% of consumers search for a restaurant on their mobile device. 60% check out images of towns and destinations before choosing to go there. I'm not going to read them all. 81% conduct online research before buying a product. Americans check their phones eight billion times per day.
Oh my God.
And so when they do that, they will end up seeing many coupons, deals, advertisements, we all know that. One point, there are 1.5 million residents in Suffolk County. 93% of them use the internet for looking into restaurants and shopping. And there's 1.3 million in Nassau County residents, and 72% use the internet for looking into restaurants and shopping as well. So, Greg, you want to take it from here?
Sure. You know, our kind of first test project was a small museum in Kings Park that needed a lot, a lot of help. Nobody was going there, it's a self-funded museum. And I met Mr. Oslo, who started it, and he said, "Greg, I know you do all that video stuff, can you help me?" So, I made a, I made a video for the museum, which I'm going to pull up. And we start, we started, I started marketing it through organic, organic ways, and social video and all that stuff. And within four days, it reached over 100,000 people. Now the museum is, they had to change their hours because they can't fit all the people that want to see it. So all of a sudden.
After seeing the video.
Yeah. It's, 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 it's working. And in a, in the middle of it, we decided to make a video about Kings Park. And the reason for that is, every, I feel every filmmaker that comes to Kings Park is only interested in a bed. They're interested in the site center, and that's what they want to make stories about. And they don't look at the community that, since 1866, it's been taking care of people. So I decided to make a video and change the image of the town. And that's what it kind of begin, that's where it begins.
Right.
And what I'm going to do is, pull up a, a video that is a rough video for the Kings Park town. It doesn't have the schools, it doesn't have the proudness of football team and all that stuff, all the aspects. But it's going to, it's just going to show kind of the rough cut, so to speak. I don't know if we can.
No, go see it, it's cool. I've seen it.
So it's the town waking up in the morning.
I saw it, it's incredibly good.
So obviously it's a rough, it doesn't have a voiceover, it doesn't have the emotions, but it shows the amenities, it shows kayaking, it shows the parks, it shows what you can do in individual towns. What is there to do? And we're getting to all the nightlife aspects and biking and... And the funny comments that we get a lot is, after I did the Kings Park museum, people are saying, "What, we have a museum?" Or, "Oh what, we have an ice rink?"
So, our ideas were very similar. When I reached out to a group in Rochester, they reached out to us, and I followed up with them. Their concept is to, not for, not for the town, but for the chambers, to reach out to the small businesses and have like certain pricing packages for them to, for their links, their Facebook link or their website, whatever they may have. They could even create their own video for their small business, and that's okay. And those links would end up being linked to whatever's being created for our town.
Yeah, so.
I know we've had something like this, similar with public safety. However, I believe that working with these small businesses and having them put in a monetary membership price per year, different packages, it'll give them an incentive to keep on sharing that link on all social networks. And when doing so, everything is there. So if a hardware store wants to share their own link, it's opened up by somebody interested in hardware, but on that link is going to be the Smithtown restaurants, the Smithtown shopping. So, and it'll just domino effect.
Yeah, I, in the folder, I included what the landing page would look like. So, you guys, I included in all the folders, but... It's a fold.
That's a sample link that would be put onto the Smithtown government page. Opening up to the chamber and the businesses, and the videos of the town.
Yes. So there is a individual hamlet of Town of Smithtown. You know, when I spoke to a couple residents and business owners in Kings Park, they said, you know, they love Town of Smithtown, but would they go to a Smithtown, let's just say, Smithtown Hamlet if they're looking for a restaurant when they're in Kings Park, they probably wouldn't. So, we created a hamlet for each town.
Right.
So if you live in Kings Park, obviously you go to Kings Park, and then you have the restaurants, the recreation, what is there to do, go to a park or culture, go to a museum, or Chamber of Commerce for that matter.
Tony Tansy, who's working with Greg, has slowly worked his way to all the other chambers, and so far, everybody's very interested as well.
Yes.
So we just wanted to bring it up to the Board. And we could, you know, we could talk about it.
Thank you.
Yeah, it really is. Greg had showed me a little bit of it last week. I, I'm not a real techie kind of a person, but I do go on the internet. Like, I'm going to a restaurant, I want to know what the menu, I want to know what it looks like, I want... So how does this work with, somebody say, I live in St. James.
Sure.
What would, how would they, what would they do to go to this link? What would make them go to the link? You go to Town of Smithtown to see what that offers, or how does it work?
Well, first you go to Town of Smithtown website, and you choose your hamlet. And then when you, when you are on, let's just say, St. James Hamlet, there's categories here. And, you know, this, this is a rough, there's a welcome, there's a Chamber of Commerce, there's recreation, shopping, dining, nightlife, culture. Now, if you're looking for a restaurant, you'll go under Dining. So now when you click on this Dining button, there's a generic video about dining.
Could you, could you click on, because I'm such a non-techy.
Sure, yeah.
If I wanted to go to a restaurant, let's say, in Kings Park, could I then click on Dining Kings Park, and would that come up, that site?
Yes.
That's great.
Yes. What, what it is.
Once it's, once it's live, once the Google spiders take their job, it'll take about a month, but yeah, it'll be Google-able.
What, you know, the whole project is called Proud Town, and it's proudtown.com as well. And what Proud Town does is, it's going to take any business that, that's on here and promote it as well. So that's going to be linked through Facebook, through social media, you know, targeting not everybody on Long Island. It's going to be targeting residents in that town. Or if you're looking for a specific town, which is, let's just say, St. James for that matter.
Build a home and buy a home, you would look and there'd be real estate.
Exactly, yes. So that's all, that's all going to come in, and, you know, just.
But Greg, just wanted to, it won't just be on the town's website. Whoever is going to, the small business is going to, you know, purchase some type of package, which hasn't been worked out yet. They're of course going to want that link on their page, their website, or their Facebook, or their Twitter, or whatever they may have. When they pull it up, our, our town is going to be there, as well as those businesses. Our town with what he's mentioning now, the hamlets, are all of our beautiful parks on the aerial views and the schools, arts, culture, real estate.
Because my daughter has a business, and this sounds very good.
Right.
So, so, say you own a business in St. James or Kings Park.
Yes.
And you have a Facebook page.
Yes.
And somebody goes to that, because everybody has Facebook pages, and that's a free site. Would they then, how would they get from their Facebook page over to?
Okay.
How would that come up?
Okay, what happens is, we.
And I don't really know Facebook, but.
Yeah. We create a Facebook page for, for each hamlet under Proud Town. What has happened, when we reached 100,000 people in four days with the Kings Park project, the museum, we went to Facebook and said, "How can we take Proud Town as an, as a brand and bring it into other towns?" So it's all linked together. And Facebook said, this was such an amazing concept that they allowed us, at this point, to open up 25 hamlets, or, you know, or towns, particular towns. So now what happens is, when we, when you have a business, it goes under Proud Town. And that Facebook Proud Town links into St. James as well. And at that point, that, it's, it's hard to explain the technology. No, 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 it's, it's, what happens is, just to give you an example. In Kings Park, a bakery loved the video of the museum. And they, what they did is, they took the Proud Town link on there from Proud Town Kings Park, and said, "Proud Town visited the bakery." Now, the bakery is linked through Facebook Proud Town and back and forth.
Right.
Plus Proud Town as well. And that all, now if you Google museum or bakery in Kings Park or whatever, now it all comes up.
Everything pulls up.
Because they, they judge, they judge all that by linkage and viewership.
So if you wanted to.
Yes.
I think it's great, we need to do something like this, but I'm trying to figure out in my mind. Say you lived in Kings, I'm thinking in terms of, we have a town in St. James that's really needs something like this.
Yes.
So say you lived in Saville. What would bring someone from Saville to the link to know that there's, there's historical sites in St. James? Well, how would, how would someone in Saville say, "Well, I'm going to get on the computer"? Would they look for historical sites or things to do, or, so I'm just trying to figure out how they get over to this.
Well, one way they'd be, it would be more Google-able. Because if they're looking for historic sites, they're probably Google-able already, but they would just gain more, you know, attention to that. But the other way is, the other way is, I, I am on social media a lot. So the other way is where you see multiple shares. So, I mean, I have family out in Queens and then live in Manhattan. I have family that live in Manhattan from multiple shares. It'll come back to me of, of, you know, of a restaurant, or a park in Manhattan, or something like that. Or a vacation they've been on, but they actually are not pulling up their own vacation, but the destination itself. So yeah, that, it'll just, so social sharing is where, you know, that's, that's where it's going to work.
Yeah.
But Google will always, Google, Google will always be there to back it up.
Yeah, you could always do that.
You know, I mean, our, our first intent was always to make the, the community within stronger, so the local community goes shopping in their local businesses versus going outside. That was like our thinking process behind it. And, you know, just like, I included some of the comments from people. You know, it's, "I love Kings Park, I visit it once a year from Ireland." Great people in Kings Park, you know. You know, it's just, "I've been living here for 58 years, will never move. Kings Park always be my home," you know, just these, these comments. It's, it's.
Three generations.
You know, "No place like home, have you seen this?" And they type, they put the name in, and obviously it comes up on their page. Just, "I want to go so badly. I can't believe how rad they make my town look, you know, how cool." It's just, it's just on, it goes on and on, just. And that's, I guess that's.
And that's the viewage of, you know, the parks, and, you know, it'd be wonderful to do the same thing and have the shops and the restaurants and, whatnot, arts and culture.
Yeah, I mean, I was, I was really stunned when, when a lot of people said, you know, I also coach soccer, Kings Park soccer, the little guys, you know, but, so I was talking to some of the parents, and they said, I said, "Did you see that video?" And he's like, "Oh, that Kings Park museum video? Yeah, of course we saw it." And he goes, "Well, we didn't even know about the museum."
So how did they get the Kings Park museum video? So I'm sitting in my house, what would happen? How did they do, because that video was gorgeous, I mean, the whole video is beautiful, but how did they get to it?
Well, okay.
You could see a neophyte in.
Well, the, the, the process is, it's between Facebook and Google targeting. But we targeted the town, strictly Kings Park. And now, everybody, a lot of people today has, have Facebook. And what it is, it automatically pops under Facebook page.
Just comes up.
Right, for, for me, Tony, Tony Tansy, who's been involved as well, and when we met and we had this similar ideas, he told me a month ago, and he showed me your draft of the Kings Park. And then last week, I saw your heritage on Facebook. I knew that very second that was you. And it got shared and shared and shared, so that's the same work as that Kings Park video in Proud Town, so that I knew that was you, and it just got shared ridiculously.
So you go on your own Facebook, and it, because you're in that town, it pops up?
Yes, exactly.
You don't have to be in the town, but you need to be friends of that person who they, who shared it.
Yeah, well, if, you know, and if you're, because, for example, a lot of businesses get involved, they have their own following.
Yeah, that, yes.
You know, let's just say the bakery, you know, it's been there for 20, 30 years.
Right.
So they have, you know, 5, 10,000 people following it.
I, I think that's great.
The minute they share it, all of a sudden, we have that audience. And multiply it by, you know, 10 or 20 businesses, all of a sudden, the whole town knows about it.
You made it clear now, so what I'm seeing is, let's take a town like St. James, and you get the deli in St. James has a Facebook. That Facebook page may direct you to Del Fuego next door, and Del Fuego might direct you. In other words, they come up on all the Facebooks within the St. James.
Right.
Yes.
But also.
Proud Town comes up.
But also on that site, on what he's showing you there, that, if you, if you're, like I said before, looking for a hardware store, and that's what, and that Tony Tan, Tansy has one, using him as an example, and he promotes himself there, he'll click that link, somebody will click that link interested in hardware, but they'll see all the restaurants that are also advertising around it. Nail salons, shopping.
In St. James, you're best going to go ding, ding.
So.
You know, I, I mean, I, I went to get my haircut yesterday, and I was talking to, to the barber shop, and, and I told her the concept, and, you know, I was surprised, you know, small barber shop, and she loved it. She's like, "When can we do it? I want to be on it."
Right. Again, the incentive to get it moving is for the people, for the small businesses to have some.
They would pay.
Yeah, and then they're going to want to share the heck out of it, so.
Yeah, because they're proud of it, you know, and the, and the way we produce these videos, you know, they're, they're, they're appealing, and they're, they're not, they're not going to be strictly commercials. They're going to be more about the community, why they're there and what.
You showed them to me the other day, they're beautiful.
Thanks.
Would, would the company then make their money through the people, the store owners, buying the?
Yes.
Is that how you make money?
Yes, that's correct. Because, you know, just to look, if we're looking at one hamlet, it's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. You know, it's about, we have to produce seven videos for each hamlet, at least.
Oh, seven.
At least, yeah.
Each hamlet?
Yes.
Because there's a lot of things, there's the real estate, there's the schools, there's the parks, there's art and leisure.
So wouldn't it be just one video for each town, it would be?
There'd be a home, like a home video.
There would be a welcome video.
Welcome video.
From, you know, obviously Town of Smithtown.
So then a Chamber of Commerce would come to you and pay for something like that? Or would the Chamber be something that it would go on automatically?
Greg would go to the Chamber.
The Chamber would help, you know, out with the, you know, to get to the businesses and.
Yeah, not necessarily need a Chamber, but greatly useful, right? All right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg, thanks for your time.
Well, I guess I don't have a big knowledge of this sort of thing, but I think it's, I saw what you could do. It's magnificent. Well, that's why I needed to ask questions, maybe I learned.
Move into executive session. Who in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Greg.
I have no idea you're behind me. You're creepy.
Is that it?
Yep.
Move to close the executive session.
Second.
Who in favor? Move to close the work session.
Second.
Who in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.